Mike Jerome.
Mike Sharon Evers.
I keep saying it. Dr. Benson Clark.
Judy Benson Clark, Marlboro.
Okay, thank you. Mary Kucheski.
Mary Kucheski, Marlboro.
Great, thank you. Joe Klein.
Joe Klein, Eva.
Great, thank you. Jessica.
She's not online.
Carrie Berlin. Is Carrie online? Okay. Gabe, Martin, Steven. Eric. Sue Salty.
Sue Salty, Marlboro.
Great, thank you. And Mike Morris, Seaman. Scott Leslie, Superintendent, is present.
Jessica Bob.
Oh, Jessica, did you join us? So did Lori. Jessica Dapsis.
Jessica Dapsis, Hebron.
Great, thank you. And Lori, did you join us?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. I saw Penny Purcell.
Penny Purcell, high school principal.
Great, thank you. Dr. Purcell, Steve, and I'm Scott. Okay.
Eva Zon.
Oh, Eva Zon. Eva.
Eva Gall, business manager.
Great, thank you, Eva. Okay, and then our student representatives, Lou. Great. And Rowan.
Rowan Ackland, Hebron.
Okay, anybody I missed? Okay. All right, simple pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three, let's move on to public comment. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro, community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcome. Public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act, we're discussing only matters on the agenda. The Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. At this time, Gabe, could I ask you to be the timekeeper again formally, please?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, so do we have anybody present? And please.
Let me just blow you off.
Anywhere is fine.
Okay.
If you could just identify yourself, that would be great.
Sure, awesome. I'm Jessica Stewart, G M S.
Where are you from?
Amson.
Okay.
I noticed that you have new policy on the agenda, the homeschool policy, so that's what parents should make public comments about. I read through it several times and I do have many comments, but I'm going to stick to the biggest section, which is the credit approval piece. So as a parent who has two children who are currently homeschooling and who chose for personal reasons due to COVID to keep them out of school, my grandmother will be nine that in June and I want them to be able to see her, so it's kind of not for two years until things have settled. I do have a sophomore and for two years she's been working extremely hard in homeschooling. She's currently enrolled in college. I am concerned about the credit piece of this policy only because I do feel that it does limit your scope of accepting credits for parents. So it is a huge range of curriculum out there. I've only been doing this for two years, but I do have a friend that started the Credit Homeschool Network. And there is a range of, you can get homeschool curriculum for free that is very good. And you can also get homeschool curriculum that can cost you $10,000 a year per student. We've chosen something on the lower end. Some of our instruction has been accredited, some of it has not been accredited, and that was done for personal reasons. Their main course, we chose accredited program just because it was recommended by someone, nothing to do with accreditation because it was a good program. But things like physical education or health, we've kind of stuck with something that was free only because we felt that that just wasn't where we wanted to spend our money. So I just do ask that as you are contemplating this policy, that you're very conscious of not alienating parents who choose curriculum that isn't accredited. They're all doing it for very specific reasons. And like I said, we have a program that we're using that costs us about $800 for the year. If you buy the curriculum and implement it yourself, if you enroll in their accredited program, it is $10,000 per student. So not anything on this thing for $10,000 next time, so I'll be kidding. So I just do ask that you are conscious about that. I do understand that you're probably going to see more parents re-enrolling, or high schoolers, which becomes difficult. We need a protocol to sort of follow on what we do and how you award credit based off of what they've been doing. I just would appreciate it if you really are very conscious about it and not alienating families. My sophomore has worked on one curriculum and now is enrolled in college. We chose that so that she could get both dual enrollment, she gets college credit and high school credit at the same time. That has been economical. It's about $320 for a core credit course, but again, we feel like we're saving on college, so that's why we chose to spend a little bit more on her curriculum this year. I did notice the list of accredited programs and one that I do see missing is the Higher Learning Commission. That is on the State Department of Education's list of approved accredited programs. So accreditation is going to be a piece of requirement. I would just ask that that might be added. But I do ask that as you're thinking about this, that you really are conscious for families and their decisions because we don't know why parents choose to homeschool and maybe return our high school students. It's not very common, but when they do, it could be for many different reasons. And you shouldn't be holding those students back based off of curriculum that their parents chose to use. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else present? Please.
This is Chair. Karen McManus, Hebron.
Okay.
I just wanted to stop by and say congratulations. And thank you all for your hard work and the effort that you put together and that you got passed. Lot, lot of work. I've made it a hobby showing up this time and have a taxi. Eventually my taxis fill up and I just kind of go to the line. And specifically the superintendent, I found it just absolutely wonderful. Your explanation to the budget helped me understand the direction of Ram. And it actually helped me decide which way to vote. And I've already guessed about it. That's all right. I approached it, understanding what was going on, and I really, really appreciate that. And I'm saying just a minute, I'm old, don't like to pay back. How can these budgets continually go through? And then I realized, and I think it's taken a long time for you to realize this, that the budget wasn't passed by 8% versus 6%. I don't really know what the percentage is for of the voting population. Basically about 6% probably the soldiers voted against the vote from home to town. And the other 94% agreed, citizens within Hebron, agreed with what's going on. I think that's really good. Again, thank you, congratulations.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to add, Mr. McManus, thank you for your participation. I recognize your voice from being home, from you showing up for so many years. And you do make us think, so we do appreciate all perspectives. And you certainly have influence and affective in my opinion, so I do appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else present for public comment? Anyone online for public comment?
Yes, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead. Identify yourself if you could.
Sure, sure, well. Hi, everyone, it's Claudia Riley from Amson, Connecticut.
Okay.
I am Ram High School care, I have two kids enrolled at the high school. I just wanted to specifically talk about the section 10.5 that's on the agenda. And this is referring specifically to a potential policy regarding the practice of shared community partner events within Ram student communications. I just want to about some complaints that parents voiced over an event that was sponsored by A H N earlier this year. And this was in respect to an outside speaker of being sponsored by A H N. At the high school, this was after two hours. This was not a mandatory event, this was a completely voluntary event. And apparently there was some throwback on that. And I'm assuming this is why the board is deciding to bring up this particular policy, because the policy changed. I just wanted to voice my opinion about that. I'm a little concerned about what the board may or may not do with respect to this policy. I'm looking at the verbiage from the event in question. And in my opinion, I feel like the topic that was presented was actually quite inspirational. This person talked a lot about teaching students how to use their voice to advocate for themselves and also treating others with empathy. I didn't find anything particularly strange or offensive about the event and the words you described the event. So I just want to make sure that we are very careful going forward in how we decide to accept or deny communications from A H N to our student body. A H N is a great partner, they always have been a great partner. And I just want to make sure that we continue that strong relationship with A H N. They do provide a number of services to the school, to the community, that are extremely helpful, beneficial outside of school hours and school expertise. So I just want to make sure that we continue to support A H N going forward, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online for public comment? Anybody raising their hand, it's really that I can't see. No? Okay. Hearing done. Move on to agenda item number four, adding or deleting any agenda items? Any concerns, any adds and deletions proposed?
I would actually like to
I'm sorry, hold on, Dr. Benson Clark, Eric's on the floor, one second.
Okay.
No, not because it's a personnel matter, it's something that we wouldn't be able to talk about.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Clark. Dr. Clark.
Hi, I would like to propose that we eliminate or delete item 10.5.
Okay. There's a proposal on the floor to eliminate item 10.5 from the new business item. Is there a second for that?
I would second it for discussion.
Okay. Mary Kucheski, seconded that. We'll do a roll call, roll call vote.
What could we have?
I'm sorry, discussion, my bad, you're right, Sue, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, so let's, go ahead, throw the discussion. Dr. Clark?
Yes, sure. I think I'd like to echo what Claudia Riley said. And 10.5 to me is worrisome and troubling. It could potentially change our practice. And if it went to say our policy committee, I just think it's dangerous. I thought a lot about it. And who decides? Who decides that something's too conservative, too liberal, or whatever? And I kind of want the opportunity to speak with a couple of people just because I wanted to think it through. I know that, you know, unfortunately, whatever, my family, my job, they come to my paying job, they come before the board ahead. So even for a practical matter, the board might not be able to oversee our, in a timely and helpful way something that, you know, was being co-sponsored by Ram and A H N. And I really trust Ram and A H N as I feel like they recently did that they heard some certain room parents, which we want to hear. And I think they heard them and they did respond. And I think they are the paid professionals. I have faith and trust in them. And then the other things that worry me is if we did get into this, we get into all or nothing, and then what about parent information or even scholarship information? So I just think it's a very tricky road to navigate. I think, you know, I'm very interested in the news and politics and boy, the more you read, everybody, it's very confusing. Things have never been more confusing. And I really trust our paid professionals. I did not, of course, I leave of both A H N and Ram. And I think it's dangerous that we're even having this conversation. And I just think about that we're the diplomats, right? Like in Harvard, we really tried to talk to everybody and leading conversations with the boards of finance, offline, that's got gotten people to about, there's nothing inappropriate, which really, as Mr. McManus said, really, really educated people. And I was to think of our town's increasing property values because we are wise and fair and just. I don't want to be extreme in any direction. I just don't think that's helpful. I think even entertaining sending it to policy is danger.
So, thank you. So let me just dive in because I'm one of the drivers of attempting to add this to the agenda. And I'll just add the couple of thoughts that I had behind it. First of all, I have no animosity towards A H N or any of our other partners that, you know, either use the school for purposes that serve the kids or the community in any other way. The genesis of this discussion was more, was less about any particular events or any particular community partner. It was more about the fact that we don't generally have a process in place for determining what we will communicate, you know, to students and what we won't from the perspective of, is it a Ram sponsored event or not a Ram? Or a Ram co-sponsored event or not a Ram event at all? And from the perspective of who owns some responsibility for that event and the communications of it. So one of the, I did inquire from our attorney, you know, what are our risk reliability that goes along with that? And the only comment that she thought was relevant to that was that pointed out the fact that we don't have a policy that addresses, say, hey, if A H N wants to, you know, and I'm only using them as an example, but pick any other partner in town, whether it's Hebron, Marlboro, or Andover. They want to sponsor an event at the school and they would like you to communicate this to the staff or to the kids. Can you put this in the, you know, the Ram bulletin? There's really no formal process that I'm aware of and certainly no policy that sort of identifies, you know, is there, you know, do we do any kind of a I don't want to say background check, but do any kind of diligence on that event to make sure that it aligns with what's appropriate for the school and what's, you know, if there's any risk or liability that goes along with that. And I know that that gets done in an informal manner, and again, I agree, Scott, and the administrative team do a great job of that. But I feel like there's no policy really to support any of the decisions that get made in that way. So I'm not sure that there is a policy that needs to be there or doesn't need to be there, but I thought it was relevant to at least suggest that potentially having the policy committee take a look at it, see if there was any, because there are, because what I come to understand from our attorneys and from a quick cave call was that there are plenty of schools that do have some level of a policy that sort of addresses this, that sort of covers that issue. So it's less about, if it's a co-sponsored event or a sponsored event, clearly, you know, if Ram is willing to sponsor it, then why wouldn't we communicate it? But I think it was more about things that are not specifically sponsored or co-sponsored by Ram. And what is our liability and what is our risk and what, you know, what is the policy and procedure for choosing to add that to the communication or not? So again, I'm not, I'm not passionate about the idea that there has to be a policy. I just thought it was relevant to maybe have a policy committee take a look at it and consider it and see if there was a best practice for that.
I also spoke with Gabe, yes, spoke with an attorney about this. And I would like to hear the superintendent's perspective because before we hear from the acting superintendent Leslie, I think it's important to share that I went to an X-Linkade workshop last year. And actually, you happened to be there in the summer, summer leadership. And C R C was kind of a newish topic. And it was a gentleman, the superintendent of, probably the Windsor or East Windsor somewhere, but he was very impressive. And when he was pushed on it, he said, we as a board don't get into it because it takes too much emotion, too much time, and it takes us away from what we need to be doing, which is really expanding, increasing student achievement to the highest level. If law goes down, it takes us away. And the gentleman happened to be African-American and well-known in the state. So, you know, I think about that too, but could we hear, because we heard that perspective, what our superintendent thinks before the rest of us kind of play in?
Of course, Scott. Sure. The, so the board policy regarding a community partnership, it's accurate to say that we really don't have a policy that specifically addresses that. We do have a policy that addresses advertising, but that is a different ball of wax, I believe. Because the advertising really is looking at paid advertising that is really geared more towards local businesses and that sort of thing. And that does give us leeway in terms of accepting advertising from some organizations and not others that, as Mike referred to, may not align with the mission of the district. So for example, a pack store is something a little less likely. You know, I think in this area, and I haven't seen any of these policies, so I can't speak from experience in terms of what a policy, how it might guide us. You know, I certainly wouldn't want to see anything that was carte blanche preventing any type of advertising. But I don't think that's even being proposed. Because obviously, we advertise a lot of community partnerships, whether it be A H N or Parks and Rec Department, Douglas Library, maybe. I think in terms of how we would go about, I guess the concern I would hold would be how the administrators, because Judy, I know you mentioned the Board of Ed, but typically it's not the Board of Ed that would actually be the decision makers because you need once a month and it's not practical. And we as administrators or staff members act on half the Board of Ed. I wonder what that would look like in terms of how we would go about determining whether something was aligned or not aligned. And I would be concerned that we could run into the possibility where we as administrators might feel that a program wasn't aligned, whereas maybe the board was feeling differently or vice versa. We may be feeling that a program was very much in the benefit of our students, but it may not have supported the board. So I don't know what, yeah, again, not having seen those policies. I am concerned that we could be going down a road where we're being asked to make decisions which almost put the administration in an almost impossible position to do that. And it is true that right now, we accept advertisements from our, actually it's advertisements, promotions from our partners. And there is quite a bit of trust in that, you know, with A H N, with Douglas Library, with Parks and Rec, with the scholarship organizations. And I would also want to be careful that we don't ask the administrators all the student possible tasks of investigating each and every organization that works for us, or scholarship, in terms of whether scholarship itself is aligned. So it's definitely a tricky slope. I try in my own mind to wonder how that would look, and I see lots of opportunities for that. But again, I haven't seen any of the sample policies, so I can't speak from experience.
I'm sorry, Lori, Lori, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I think that, Scott, that kind of what you just said engages whether or not I think this should be kept or is needed. I guess my question is, is the intent of this to help articulate the current practice and just write down what currently happens? Or is the intent to change it? I think I have concern if there's intent to change it or exactly what Scott was just communicating. But if the intent is, if there is a need, should there be a need for, I don't know, justification as to why something was shared or not to articulate a current practice? So that's in writing, so people can refer to that and understand how or why things get shared. Then I think that that has merit. So I guess I would, to circle back to, should we keep this or delete it? Because I think we're talking about it in great detail, but I think we have to decide if we're keeping it or deleting it, right, Mike?
Yes.
So I guess that's my question to help you make that decision. Is the intent to change the policy and that's why it's on the agenda? Or is the intent to articulate the practice to that or delete it?
I think, you know, the original discussion about this was less about trying to change or anything. It was somewhat to formalize it. And then I think the other thing was, and this was something that our board attorney pointed out, was to develop, you know, maybe a little bit of structure so that we don't get into a situation where we have people, you know, kind of cornering us in the fact that there isn't a policy that doesn't allow them to sort of decide on certain elements that, you know, Scott and the administration decide is not in alignment with the, and it's not as simple as a package store. It's some other, you know, subject matter that, you know, that in the administrations, again, to Scott's point, they're going to have to meet these decisions in real time, not once a month, you know, at a board meeting. Gives them some policy to stand on to say, yeah, we don't think that that's in alignment with the policy that's developed. And so it gives them some ability to kind of filter out what isn't appropriate for the mission or the school. And to echo Judy's point, I do agree, I do trust the administration to make those decisions. But I don't, I think they're kind of making those decisions sort of on their own, sort of hanging in the wind a little bit without any policy to stand on at all. So that's, but again, this is, I'm not really looking to develop a policy tonight or anything. My whole thought in bringing this up, and frankly, it was asked of a constituent of mine to consider it, was just to bring it up for discussion and potentially push it down to the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee, to consider what is out there for optional policies and if there is even a need. I mean, maybe there isn't a need, but I think they're the more appropriate group to determine that.
And is it possible, if it's determined tonight, to go to policy that it can be stipulated that other policies are used in the committee to determine if, you know, to use as reference? And can we have administration represented there? Michael Scott obviously will be at the committee meetings, but is it possible to add other administration to that? Should it go there to get their input, you know, before making the decisions?
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't oppose that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mary, go ahead.
That's okay. Most of the things I was going to ask at the end of our, but I just wanted to if there is any potential, how would we, from other schools that we share with us, that would be I think I have a big thing, A, and B, I agree with Lori about it sounds like that a little bit of that, they do base this. And I think we've answered already, I'm quite ready.
So we've had a lot of discussion and to Lori's point, we're sort of diving into the actual meat of the discussion. The proposal on the floor is whether or not to keep it as an agenda item or to delete it. So is there any more discussion sort of relevant to the, are they adding it or deleting it, I mean, keeping it or deleting it? Okay, hearing done, why don't we go ahead and do a roll call vote on this? So the proposal on the floor is to delete item 10.5 from the agenda. So a yes vote would delete it and a no vote would defeat that proposal. So Lori?
I'm going to say no based on that, the way that conversation ended.
Okay. Mike? Dr. Benson Clark?
I, you know, the way the conversation ended, I think I'm going to say yes, but I'm more comfortable with it being a
Okay, just to be clear, a yes vote means that we delete it, a no vote means that we keep it.
I, so, a no vote means we keep it on, I know, so I'm saying yes, because I feel more comfortable, I'm still saying yes.
Okay, got it, thank you. Uh, Mary?
I'm also going to vote no, based on that, so.
Okay. Joe? Uh, Jessica?
I'm gonna say no also, especially with the caveat that administration's involved in that process.
Uh, Carrie, did you join us?
Yes, I'm here. I'm gonna say no.
Okay. Uh, Gabe?
No.
Eric?
No.
Sue?
No.
And I'm gonna vote no as well. Okay, so that does not carry. All right, any other added or deleted items from the agenda? Okay, hearing none, let's go to the student representative reports. Lily?
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you again. Pardon my appearance. Track parties got out, did not have the time to change. So, here I am. So, um, as many of you may or may not know, this weekend is senior weekend, so Friday we have our senior exam, that's going to be to wait compound through the setting. Saturday is the prom, and Monday is senior school day. So, that's pretty packed weekend.
I don't think that's formal. I don't believe that's on the agenda.
Forget, forget. It's, um, just a regular Monday.
Very good, very good.
And so, AP exams, just sort of got over there. There are still some more running, I think they run to the end of May, but I don't think we offer any of the classes that are having exams. I think it's more like, I think one of them's like Japanese literature, we don't offer here. And I just want to point out how well Ram prepares students for AP exams. I went into my AP exams feeling good, even like, even before studying, I felt that I could do well in my exams, just based on how the curriculum is set up in each of my classes. And I just want to applaud every AP teacher at Ram, because I think we score high and for good reason. And, my next point, I took AP Environmental this year, AP Environmental Science, and I learned a lot about the environment and the world around us, and how us living can destroy the environment so easily. It's not a required course at Ram. I think we require general science and bio, and then from then on, you can take whatever, but usually, students take chemistry junior year and physics senior year. I think we should introduce environmental science as a required course for students to take their senior year. I think it's important to have it be specifically senior year, because at that point, students are, they're most mature, and the topics that we discuss in AP Environmental are very real, and they are very critical to the progression of the planet. And I think students really need to be aware of how our actions affect the world around us. You know, carbon footprint and such, I think it's important for kids to know that, and a lot of them don't, and a lot of adults don't know either. And I think it's really, really important, I'd say even more important than learning about astrology and general science or mitochondria in bio, that might just be me. But I think it's something that all students can relate to, and I think it's something that everyone should know. So, I think that should definitely be a topic of discussion to make that a required course, I don't know, but, you know, my view on it. And I wanted to congratulate you all for having the budget go through, voted for first time.
Congratulations.
That was exciting. And as it is my last board meeting, so sad, I wanted to thank you all so much for just teaching me how like local government works, and how I can represent my community and represent the student body. I learned so much about how to, you know, see other people's viewpoints, and understand where other people are coming from, and respectfully disagree. And I think that's a really important thing to, you know, learn, and I'm glad I got to learn it at such a young age, and that I can bring it into my profession. So, I just wanted to thank you all so much for giving me that space.
Thank you. Rowan?
So, yeah, first of all, I also want to say congratulations on getting the budget passed. And I also just wanted to talk a little bit about the honors breakfasts that are coming up next week. This is obviously like a moment, it's like, you know, honored kids and the hard work that they've been putting in, especially this year, like, you know, coming out of the pandemic. So, on next Tuesday, May 4th, it's going to be for our ninth and 10th careers, and then next Wednesday, May 25th, it's going to be for seniors and seniors. So, that's going to be, you know, it's a fun time for us, so, you know, basically reflecting our hard work for, again, honors, three quarters of it. And then, yeah, second thing I wanted to talk about was mainly going off of like, you know, the community, like, you know, sharing like events within the community and stuff, and that topic of discussion. I support, you know, continuing to do that, because not only do you have like, you know, it's an important way for like outside, you know, parties to like get their messages or like, you know, fundraising events, or their, like, you know, anyone if they want to raise awareness. I think that it's important for like the new community to like, kind of like, get involved in that sort of thing, and I think it's important that, you know, they, because it's a good opportunity for them, like, you know, to not only, like, new opportunities to attend these sort of events, but like, you know, learn new things, or like, you know, help, you know, their opportunities to help them grow overall. And I think that those sponsored businesses should continue to be incorporated in like underrehabilitate and stuff like that. And then, you know, I overall just think it would be a disservice, honestly, on both ends, if, you know, we staff like, you know, spreading this communication, because I just think that similar to what I said before, it limits both people's abilities, like, to not like spread these stuff from raises and, you know, can I spread, like, intentionally spread awareness, but, and like, you know, gaining new knowledge, I feel like that it limits, you know, it limits that possibility. So, yeah, I just wish we could have that. So, uh, anyhow, that's pretty much it. The category of people, top four, like, I'm just, so, yeah, I'm.
Notice Rowan didn't die any of the seniors out, but.
Rowan and Lily, actually, I have to say, every year, our student representatives are impressive, and you are as well. And you always keep my faith that we're going to be okay, as crazy as this world is, Ram keeps producing amazing kids and graduates with opinions of their own who speak well and make things differently. So, thank you both for your time on the board.
All right. Move on to chair report, so I will start off with also a round of thanks. So, I think it's, you know, we just finished passing both the operational and the capital budget, but I think it's very easy, once that's over, to just go and not really think about all the energy and work and effort that went into it. And I think we would be remiss if we don't take a second to thank the department heads and our administration team, the principals and assistant principals, and their support folks, any of the teachers and staff that participated or generated information that all kind of all sort of bubbled up, that actually developed that. Certainly Scott and Eva and the support team from the superintendent staff, and then as well as the board. I mean, it's easy to say, okay, done, but that was a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of effort, a lot of discussion. There were some really great things that were done in the facilities committee that helped facilitate an even better budget to forward to the town. And it takes a lot of, a lot of, a lot of time and commitment and energy and effort, and I don't want anybody to think for one second that that didn't overlook. And I thank you all very much for that.
Like, I really need to add that, I mean, I don't know what their comments did, but I really want to thank my county partners from Marlboro, because we take the budget super seriously as like job one. And I, I mean, I think it's fair to say that Marlboro was a contributing factor to us, us being successful with the budget. And I know Carrie, Sue, and Mary worked incredibly hard, and as many of you know, we had separate meetings with people, we got information with Scott, everything was transparent. But I say that because I think my toast to everybody was congratulations, next year's budget work starts tomorrow. And to a degree, I'm serious, the budget work, and we are like ambassadors for Ram, and it's important that we, you know, we do that work and we be helped with the budget. And we did, we have studied that in the past, you know, not to get too much into that, but who exactly votes, who doesn't vote? And, you know, it, it doesn't matter. So, that's something we can certainly talk about. Eric, I think he said that that would be a good future conversation somewhere, maybe, I don't remember if he said summer or when he said, maybe he said like everybody should be there.
Yeah, I think it would be great to learn from a great, a great job, or should, or other towns, pick up on a few things, and, you know, it's just a couple of, a couple votes swing the other way, and you've got success rather than failure, and so, I think it would be great to, to get together and discuss what went wrong and what went right.
Agreed. So, again, moving to circle back and say thank you to everybody that was involved in that. Can't tell you how much I appreciate all your work and your effort, and the positive results are definitely proof of how well you did that. The second item that I want to thank is, take a moment, we are losing our two student representatives. Well, actually, you'll be back, right? Okay. So, we're only losing Lily, right? For this, this will be our last meeting. One of the things that I've noticed in these meetings is that it'd be very easy for the student representatives to be church mice and melt into the background, but that wouldn't be constructive, and it wouldn't help with what we have you here for, which is to be the voice for the students. And you've done an exceptional job this year at that, and you should be very proud of yourselves. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate your candor and your willingness to come in here and step up. I know, you know, when we were having discussions about the, what's the class that we were losing? Family and consumer sciences, you know, Rowan stepped in to really dig in hard on some of the numbers and information for us. Incredible job, and Lily, you are constantly here to keep us centered on what exactly is being said and is a concern of the students, and can't tell you how important that is to this body. So, thank you both very much for your work this year. All right, that being said, I will pass it on to the report on the superintendent, item seven.
Thank you very much, Mike. And again, I'm gonna sing some familiar songs here. You know, the budget this year that we handed you, when I say we, the administrative team, handed you, was a much different animal than the budget that the Ram board worked at last year. Remember, last year, we were in the thick of COVID, and we really didn't know where the economy was going. We gave back an extraordinarily large amount of money, and I think it was an easy budget, even though it had an increase, it was an easy budget for the towns to welcome and approve. We gave you a very difficult budget, I think, to sell. And, you know, I think it's a brilliant budget. It does everything that I would hope a budget would do. Takes care of the, ensuring the likelihood of academic programming, it ensures the full staffing to make sure that that programming gets delivered appropriately. It addresses the building needs that were within the building that we're sitting in, as well as the fields that surround us outside. And, you know, we had some things going in our favor, we knew that we had some reductions that we were able to play with. But, you know, I think as we heard from some factors of the town, we probably didn't give as much as some people would have liked, and we maybe kept a little more of the surplus than some folks would have liked. And I understand that, I totally get that, because we're still in an economy that we're all having some difficulty imagining what might be down the road. But I think as a board, you did a brilliant job of fully engaging, and I appreciate the fact that the board doesn't just sit back and kind of, you know, take it, take what we give, instead, we push back, we talk, we have a lot of give and take. The fact that Rowan and Lily both participated was absolutely brilliant, because you brought the in-class from the student perspective to the table. So, I really cannot tell you how appreciative I am of this Board of Ed and all the work that you did. And my next comment has nothing to do with the comments that were sent earlier, but Mr. McManus, I'd like to thank you as well, because as you know, we don't get a lot of taxpayer involvement in the budget process, and you're familiar face at this time of year, and I so appreciate that we have taxpayers willing to come in, and even if we don't always agree, the fact that you're here to listen to us is fantastic, and I hope you know that we're here to listen to you as well. So, I really couldn't be happier with the budget that Ram has to move forward. Lily, I also have to thank you for always doing a brilliant job of giving the student perspective. I don't think there's a board member here, regardless of whether they graduated just a short while ago, or a while ago, a long while ago, who doesn't have a really deep understanding of where it's at, and you've done a really brilliant job of that. And I know you're going to do fantastic in Vermont, but I wish you'd have been the best you're not moving forward. Rowan, you're not leaving, you're here for another year. I got here for another year, but I'm gonna say congratulations and thank you, because this is your last meeting as well, I say. Although, you're welcome to come up to the plate. Thank you again, congratulations. And Jessica Daxis, this is your last meeting, and I would like to thank you as well. You've been a fantastic source of reason on the board, you've done a, you know, been a fantastic partner in your role on these subcommittees, and you allow your husband to stick around for a little longer. So, it's always a pleasure to have you, to be a part of our community. Thank you very much for all that you've done for the Ram board and the students at Ram.
Thank you, Sam. It's been a wonderful experience working with everybody very much, so.
Thank you.
All right, the consent agenda. So, we have the approval of the minutes of the April 18th meeting, as well as the May 2nd meeting, both enclosures, eight point one A and eight point one B. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Scott, I'm sorry, Eric made a motion to approve the minutes, is there a second? Gabe seconded it? Do a voice vote. All in favor of accepting the minutes of the, approving the minutes of the April 18th enclosure, eight point one Alpha, and May 2nd, 2022 enclosure, eight one 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 B, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing not opposed, we, the minutes for both meetings are approved. Scott, reservation letter?
We have a resignation letter from Christine Ziner, who's one of our Spanish teachers who, we are, we are sad to say leave, and we wish her the best of luck. And she's made a decision based upon her family situation, so we certainly support her resignation and wish her the best of luck.
Do we need to?
You do, yes, we need to.
So, a motion to accept a letter of resignation for Christine Ziner?
This is Lori, I'll be present.
Okay, Lori? And Eric will second it.
You don't do so.
You got a lot of seconds? Okay, any discussion on that? Hearing no discussion, we'll do a voice vote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes, we accept the resignation letter for Christine Ziner. Okay, now we move on to nine point one, which is old business, and second reading of some policies. Just to be clear, we have a third reading coming up in, is that correct?
No, this is the final reading.
This is the final reading, right.
So, this would be the board meeting where it would be appropriate for a motion to approve the policies.
Okay, okay. Okay, for all three of these?
Correct, yeah, they're all, these are all three second readings. We have the eligibility for participation in co-curricular activities. Andrew presented to the board on, the reasoning, we find that in terms of providing a little more flexibility for us to support those students who are struggling with their grades, and giving them some additional options. to continue to participate in athletics while we're also supporting them as they look to enhance their academics. The school lunch charging policy is really adopted due to state requirements. And this addresses the importance of not shaming students as far as lunch charging. And that provides us with guidance in terms of when we can and can't question students who may not be able to afford lunch looking through the line. And then the credit for online courses just added some specifics in terms of which online courses we will add credit for. And again, it continues to encourage us to encourage students to take online courses. It provides some structure.
And just to be clear, that credit for online courses is not connected to the discussion about the homeschool curriculum. It's a totally separate policy.
Correct.
Later part of the agenda. Need to have them read through the entire policy?
Nope.
So I guess it'll be hard to discuss it if there's questions.
Correct.
All right. From the policy committee, is there anything else that we need to add to this before we go through this? No. Okay. All right. So for five, five one three two A, which is the eligibility for participation in co-curricular activities, enclosure nine point one A, is there a motion to accept that, approve that policy?
Sue.
Okay, Gabe and I'll, Sue, I'll take you as the second.
Okay.
Okay. Discussion? Go ahead. Did you have something?
Yes. I thought about this from a little bit. I think that a big part of a high school education is learning personal responsibility. And that includes in a big way doing your homework and turning in the project that you've been assigned. And meeting deadlines, a big deal. And you know, studying for the test. And I'm uncomfortable lowering the bar on our academic requirements and where to play sports. It's not an egregious policy, as it is today. As a matter of fact, a student could be a borderline poor student and still participate in sports. And the exception being that they're actually failing perhaps, then they would not be eligible. And to me, there's a point to be made there. We wouldn't want that student to be spending time fulfilling their academic commitments rather than spending that spare time at athletic practice or at the gym. So with that in mind, I am prepared to make the change. Thank you.
Dr. Benson Clark?
Yeah. I, you know, I appreciate high standards. I really do. I don't know. I have extraordinarily high standards. I've been lucky to have students achieve at those levels. My own children achieve at those levels. I have to say though, I'm extraordinarily concerned about everybody's mental health right now and well-being. And I trust the guidance of our athletic director and others. I've seen kids and I've been at PPTs and Bible board meetings for kids who, the parents, for 30 years, for 30 years, decided that, no, they're off the football team. And so then they're even less, in my opinion, or observation, anecdotally less, you know, motivated to participate. So I agree with high standards. I really, really do. And I thank God for Ram. You know, my daughter, who's graduating next weekend, has her dream job lined up at BYU in Boston. My other daughter is working for a doctorate of art and psychology this summer. They're doing extraordinarily well because of Ram and those five standards. But I think when we're looking at the whole giant, if you look back to our commitment statement and our strategic plan, all means all and supporting all kids. And I think that this is a nice balance. And I don't think, I do want to like to hear more from, I don't know if acting superintendent Leslie or our athletic director is online, but to hear a little bit more about that because that's always the concern, not watering down standards. Is there anything you can speak to, your chairman?
Sure. Judy, I'd be happy to just, just comment on that. And the, some of the challenges that we discovered with our, the way the policy is currently written, where a student can have no Fs in order to be eligible, was that the relatively small number of students who are impacted by this current policy do tend to fall in fairly specific groups. And we have fairly high representation by some of our special needs students, free and reduced lunch students. So our concern is, is that the group of students who are struggling with eligibility may have some other challenges as well. And I think one of, well, I know one of our concerns is that it sounds like it makes sense that they should be spending time on academics as opposed to something like athletics. But what we actually find is that when a student loses that piece that they love, they often lose hope and they don't have the same. It's harder for a youngster to sometimes see far enough in the future to say, well, I need to get myself back in here and get my grade up so I can participate at a later date. It's, we believe more, more likely that the student will work to get that grade up if they're continuing to participate in the activity. You know, just a challenge of adolescence, you know, the future doesn't exist sometimes until you get to it. And so it's not always as motivating as we as adults may hope something like that would be. And what we anticipate that this change, because keep in mind that the change does allow students to have one F and still maintain eligibility. But that F can lower than a 50. So we're not talking about a student who has given up and isn't doing anything. We're talking about a student who maybe has a 58 and is really struggling with work or has a 58 and is struggling in this class because they put all their time into another class. So you know, we feel that this is a reasonable balance to addressing the needs of that group of students while at the same time not giving it away and simply saying, don't worry about it. You can continue to participate because they still have the obligation to bring that most grades up.
So we don't have the athletic director present, but as a poor substitute, you know, as a varsity and middle school, high school coach for just north of 15 years, I have never once seen it been constructive in any circumstance to cut a kid away from sport participation as a result of the grades. It's always been more constructive to Dr. Benson Clark's point that you keep them involved, you keep them, their mental health at the forefront and to rely on people like the coaches and parents to monitor and meter how much participation they do. And I think, you know, we talked a lot about trusting the folks that are, that work for the district. I do trust those coaches specifically and the, you know, the athletic director to, you know, at the point where it's time for somebody to spend a little bit more time after school at a class than to do that versus being at practice. And I know that's happening because I see it with my own kids. But I've never once seen that as a constructive method for motivating them to get back. It seems counterintuitive, but just experience, my experience has always been that it's more constructive to keep them there and involved. And I think the one last thing I would say, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but I think this still, if this either aligns us with C I A C policy or is it still slightly more restricted?
It's still much more restricted.
Yeah. So we're not, I mean, we're also aligning ourselves with more, I think, schools within the state and what their restrictions are. But even still, we're not, we're not even meeting the bar, the C I A C, the minimum bar of the C I A C. So that's my two cents. Anyone else?
Yeah.
So good.
So I, as you probably all know, am a student athlete. I was three seasons this year and I also played lacrosse and soccer throughout my high school experience. And now I run full-time. And I totally recognize how sports affects mental health and how like loving a sport can totally change your outlook on life. It's something you love, it's something you wake up and look forward to do. But I, and I know Mr. Leslie was talking about how it's harder for adolescents to look forward. And I do understand that. But I don't think that negligence of seeing the future is something we should encourage. I, I think that, you know, your actions shouldn't have consequences. And this is school. Where academics should come first. And you know, we're not Ram High School because we do sports, we're a high school. We educate students. I think we should be teaching our students that if your actions have consequences, you have to be, you know, responsible and on top of your work. And I think that really if a kid is that passionate about their sport and they get kicked off the team because they have an F, I think, you know, I would hope that it would, it would come to their senses that, hey, my actions have consequences and something I love just got taken away. I need to work for it to get it back. And I, you know, I was on the track team with someone who did end with an F. And they, they worked up, they got their grade up and they're back on the track team. And I think that's a great thing. They saw that their actions have consequences and now they're back. And also, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is, the policy is if you end a quarter or a semester with an F.
Correct.
I think that is like a pretty substantial thing to do. There's a lot of things in place at Ram, support systems that you can get throughout the quarter to make your grades go up. We have academic labs, math lab, writing lab. You can bump down your level, you can change your class, you can change your teacher. A lot of things you can do before you get kicked off the team. And so I think, you know, it's not easy to get an F because we have so many support systems because we're a school, because that's what we do. And so I think it's important for us to think about that. And you know, how do, why should Lori stand?
Just throw one thing in to revisit something that Scott had commented on and that the athletic director also presented in his discussion. I think, I don't disagree with what Lily said, but the one thing I think we definitely need to keep in mind is that the body of students that affects is, correct me if I'm wrong, it was about a dozen or so at most. And that dozen are generally students that are, well, I agree with the consequences and that kind of thing. I don't, I'm not sure that that dozen is generally having pretty tough challenges across the board. And maybe school doesn't come quite as easy to them. And so I think, again, keeping in mind that it's that 10 or 12 kids who are working very hard to get to that point where they can keep up. I'm not sure that they, I'm not sure even the part about the consequences is even registered. It's just one more thing that they're failing on. So I think that there's a set of challenges in some circumstances for that particular group. That's all I would ask everybody to keep in mind. Let's, sorry, let me go to Lori, Lori first, and then I'll come back to you, Dr. Benson Clark. Go ahead, Lori.
Thank you. Lily, I just wanna say your conviction is fabulous and you are articulating your points so, so well and so eloquent. So thank you for that. That's, I think, I thought that was really great. I wanna point out a couple things just to make sure I clarify. So there is a consequence here from reading it correctly because they're unable to stay in a competition, correct? Or that they are allowed to practice, right? So there is a built-in consequence, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Then you clarify this.
Yeah, right.
Correct. To that point.
At the coaches' discussion.
There is a consequence, right? Because we do know that competing in games is, you know, is exciting for an athlete. And that's, you know, part of why, a big part of why we are on the team to what we do. So there is a built-in consequence. And I do see that clear here. I think we have to be really concerned with students feeling isolated. And by, by coming off of a team or a club entirely, when maybe that's the one positive, the one hope they have, maybe the one thing they feel that they're so good at at the moment. I think you see that in my thought. And I think it goes outside of the population that might most need this policy. You know, the populations that you identified just a moment ago again. It could be anybody, you know? Anyone can have a really difficult quarter for a variety of reasons. Death in the family, divorce, financial hardship. And really, it's not for us to decide why a student might be in a difficult situation but to support them. And I feel that, you know, this as opposed to, that's it, you're off, so you're out, gives them that little bit of hope. It feels supportive as opposed to punitive and a positive guidance. Because I'm going to assume, and Scott, that's my correct me if I'm wrong, this policy is what they're allowed to do in sports. This isn't an all-encompassing policy that says, now, they're all of course, you know, academically and beyond the classroom that are here for the student. That's second. That's, that's something happening simultaneously as this is possibly permitted, right?
That's true. Yes.
Yeah. So this just governs what that student athlete is able to do for that sport during the time of the grades are in question. And in my opinion, as an educator, as a parent, who has really, I've seen it with her children as well, and myself personally, a supportive model with positive guidance and help for students, I think is the way to go, not, in my opinion, lowering standards, but actually increasing standards because we're supporting the whole child and looking for the whole students to increase their, their livelihoods and what's going on in their lives. And I think that's, that's the stance that I look for with Ram and the students.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Benson Clark?
Lori, thank you. You said many of my points evidently better than I would have said them. So I really appreciate that. I definitely, no kidding, truly. You know, I think the other piece, there are a few pieces here. In my home, I think that ability to decide, okay, are we going through something difficult? Because actually, when my kids were in high school, we did go through something difficult. I'm not sure of the details because it's not appropriate, it's nobody's business. But I could want to work closely with the guidance counselors, the coaches, and to make that decision as to whether they're on or off the team. We did not receive that in my family. But had we, I really think it would have been most appropriate for me as a parent guardian to be involved. That being said, and I actually kind of hate this word and how it's overused, but there is a point of privilege in this, everyone. My children and all of your children, you're the Board of Education. You're active parents. You just are. That's just a fact. And there's some privilege there. My children have the best guidance counselor in the world. This is Ma, but they also didn't want her out and I communicated with her. So it's like this big partnership. And I still remember, it was before I even had my first daughter, meeting in my laundry room on a Sunday, and I was going to a due process hearing. A psychiatrist from West Hartsburg called me back. And he spoke about his student. And he said, it's a combination of biological and environmental significant challenges. And so what that kind of meant is sometimes children who maybe there are, say, mental health, maybe types of challenges that run in the family. that run in the family, there may be economic pressures. Maybe they don't eat well. And I don't want to get into the whole thing, but I really think that we really need to think of how to support. And I actually have to agree with our chair, Mr. Morris, that, you know, I've been doing this a long, long time with kids in high school. And before I had children, and maybe even when my kids were babies, I would have said, high standards. And you take them off, and listen, my kids are 99% high. They're fine, they're okay with their standards, as Lori said, as she is, as I am. It's not even for us, it's for the discretion that the coaches are allowed. I like that a lot. It's putting this into the care of human beings who know the care about our children. I think this is really an important one that we have to support the adults to make sure that we are indeed, and actually, I agree, I don't know if it was my authority or both, but someone said it actually raises standards. And in every doubt, because it's that thing we love, and someone's working with you, and sometimes becomes a triangle. They get the cheer of whoever loves you. They're all helping you to move forward. So this is, I really hope that we can support this.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote on eligibility for participation in co-curricular activities. Policy 513.32A, enclosure 9.1A, acceptance of that policy. So with that being said, Lori?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Dr. Benson Clark?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
No.
Jess?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Eric?
No.
Sue?
No.
And I vote yes. The yes is carried, the policy is accepted. Moving on to 5540, school lunch charging. Scott, you want to cover any key elements with that?
Sure. This again is essentially a policy that we're obligated to have in place, which ensures that we don't embarrass a child who is going through the lunch line and may not have the money to purchase the lunch. And helps us to manage students that end up going in debt with lunch purchases. So it really is a policy that we're obligated to have in place that prevents us from publicly embarrassing a student who may not be able to perform much as they would want. And it helps us also to ensure that we provide any resources that that student are going to need as well.
Okay, that being said, is there a motion to accept draft policy 5540, school lunch charging, enclosure 9.1B?
Yes.
Eric makes the motion. Any second?
Second.
Dave seconds it. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a voice vote on this. All in favor of accepting policy 5540, school lunch charging, enclosure 9.1B?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, that policy is accepted. And move on to 6195, credit for online courses, enclosure 9.1C.
So, with the state's new graduation requirements, they require schools to encourage and provide online options for our students, which we have courses that have been developed within the school that are offered online. Students have a myriad of opportunities to stay online courses. What, with this, one of the things we are finding is that because there are such a large number of online courses available, we obviously want to make sure that, you know, the student is fit well to the courses that they're interested in. We want to make sure that the online program that they're engaged in is, meets the same requirements that we have for our own courses. So this takes really an existing policy and simply adds some criteria. And it still remains pretty generous in terms of what options a student has. So what was added to this is the fact that the student has to meet at least one of these criteria, not all four of them, but at least one of the criteria. The course is not offered at Ram High School. Or we do offer the course, but the student's unable to take the course due to an unavoidable scheduling conflict. The principal, andres and ex, determines that the student requires a differentiated or accelerated learning environment with agreement from the student's teachers and parents, or the student has failed the course and wishes to recover credits in that course area. So it basically helps us, gives us some more specific guidance in terms of approving online courses.
Okay. So is there any motion to approve 6195, credit for online courses, enclosure 9.1C?
I think the motion to discuss. Or is that, is Eric?
Yeah, I think we need a motion to approve it, and then second, and then we can have discussion. I'll make a motion.
All right. Mike approved the, made the motion. Any second? Eric will second it. All right, discussion. Dr. Benson Clark?
I'm a little bit confused, Superintendent Leslie. Is, we have any parents tonight when she's speaking to this? We're not able to?
No, this has nothing to do with the discussion from earlier. Yeah, this was a policy that was introduced by the policies.
Oh, right, 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 okay, okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor of approving draft policy 6195, credit for online courses, enclosure 9.1C? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none opposed, that policy is accepted. Brings us to item, agenda item 10, new business. First on the list is 10.1, discussion of possible action for school meal prices for the 2022-2023 school year. Scott?
So we have had the, well, every school is going to have that fortune of not having charged, having charged students for lunch for the last couple of years. We still don't know the fate of where we are. And I, unless you guys have information that we don't have. So one of the things that we have to look ahead to next year and do is to, for the board, to approve the lunch prices given the chance that we go back to having to charge, having to charge students for lunch. So John Perrier, Kate Selly, our, Kate is our manager for Whitsons here on campus. And John is their, John, are you the regional director?
I'm the district manager.
District manager?
I don't have that high title.
And Kate and John are with Whitsons. And so they're going to walk us through a presentation for their recommendation for lunch prices for next year. Eve and I sat down a couple weeks ago, and so we already kind of, we walked through this with them. They're actually going to then stay for the next agenda item as well because one of the formalities that the board has to do is just to approve the contract again. We're not set to go after bid for another few years, but as a formality, the board just needs to approve the contract on a yearly basis.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you all for time for us and time to present. Certainly, Scott introduced us already, so we're, we're who we are. Our mantra as a company is people for the communication. We'll talk a little bit about, have Kate talk about that because she lives it every day. I do too, but at a different, different level. She lives it here, which is more important to everybody in the home. I'll go over a little bit about what's happening currently with the financials, the statistics of participation rates, and give you a little scenarios on the meal pricing and some of the background. After this, we'll sit down and then, I guess, even Scott will get involved in the next motion to approve our contract going forward, and we'll go from there.
Sure. Thank you. Our concept to you as a food group in the local community, the people of the street, I don't know my family. I certainly enjoy seeing all the students faces daily, getting to know the people, the faculty, who, sort of wholesome groups that taste great. We certainly look forward to any advice and feedback. And again, just seeing what's eating our week, great. And communication to nurture authentic communication with everyone. And we will see some more new pieces that we have incorporated in this as well. But since we've gone back to our roots, we have a philosophy of simply rooted in food and family. So we move through a very wholesome manner. We try to bring local, armed, fresh meat to everything. Have a lot of variety for everyone. We have separate monthly features with our harvest foods that have been tested by our regional chefs. And so we enjoy bringing all of this to you. A little bit about my folks, my employees. Kate Barlow, been promoted to kitchen supervisor. Lisa, we welcome back from last year. Patricia Madden, who's been with Ram for 23 years. She's a C ball, we love her. Kate, again, Rob Sangal, who had a CalHawk database in Ryan Smith. And we welcome two new members to our team, Rob and Klaus, and Don Steiner. All the staff has completed their mandatory hourly training. We have a great module with Whitsons. Appleman is a great portal for training for all of my staffs. Yolanda Stain is the same week as faculty and teacher appreciation week, but it was also National School Lunch Hero Day. So we celebrated a little bit with some Whitsons superhero gear. And, you know, should appreciate my staff as well. Okay, and we're not going to get into the figures.
All right, so just some brevity to financials and, because I know that they're a little bit granular, but I just wanted to give a snapshot as to where the high school and the middle school are year-to-date on breakfast meals through April, or May 11, I'm sorry. We have 20,603 breakfast meals served in the high school, 8934 in the middle school. Lunch meal, 64,195 and 34,519 at the middle. Breakfast participation and lunch participation are correlated to meals and the morning. So I'm going to briefly go through the results of this year's financial profitability and financial statement through April of 2022 as our last statement. And then where the end of the year looks to look to be. And then what next year's budget projections are and some of the rationale that go along with that. So current year, as I said, we stated total breakfast meals were about 33,909, total lunch meals, 101,235. And the program profit to date is $100,541. And I'll get into the slide that talks a little bit about why that's happening. The end of the year, looking at 45,391 breakfasts, 126,197 lunches, and a program profit of about $122,864. And the project projections for next year look very different. And it looks like a total breakfast of about $18,000. And I gotta get a little closer because my eyes are going bad. And then total lunches of $100,800. And a profit loss, loss next year. And I'll go into that for $34,640. All right, so this year, the contributing factors, big ones. Universal free lunch, last two years, all students have been on free, unpaid. This year in particular, USDA increased reimbursement rates to what they call summer food service program rate of $4.56 a meal. Normal rate this year would have been, if we were on national school lunch program, $3.66. So basically, 90 cents a meal more for every lunch served and breakfast. So huge, huge revenue increase. Meal participation much higher this year than a normal NSLP year prior to COVID. The COVID year, obviously, pre-COVID would be the 1920 up until February or March 13th, technically, about February of last month. And this year, we had, this past summer, we had summer meal program offered, which is typically not a program that Ram has in the summer. So that increased revenues. And we've had a myriad of supply line challenges this year, as you've heard in many of the news feeds this year. And with that, plus the goods and price increases, inflation increases that affect us greatly, and a lot of menu changes because of availability of product. Labor costs, very tight labor market. Can't explain it any more than that. Hard to hire people, increasing labor rates because you have to, you just have to do it to get people to work, into work. So we've been able to do that here and also do that relatively responsibly on a percentage increase. And then the overall student satisfaction with the different menu choices this year, because previous year was basically just a hybrid year of non-congregate feeding, curbside feeding, in the pods on different floors, really nothing that looked like a normal school year. This year, we have gotten back to a lot of the basics and gotten back to some of the menu choices that we had proposed in our proposal the previous year when we won the contract, but we weren't able to do anything with it because of COVID. Sure, go ahead.
But also to consider, you know, when I was over the summer, this was regardless of age, you know, certainly anybody with an infant or if they're in school, maybe in the elementary school, that they could come here as well. And we were able to buy meals for seven days, not just this school day, which is that this year, we've gone back to instructional days only because we haven't been able to serve during holidays. It's just a little, you know, a bit of respectful for you.
So my last bullet was basically a recovery from the previous year operating condition. So we have recovered, but it's still not where it was prior to COVID. So what's going to contribute to next year, what's going to drive the profitability of this program, is the anticipated drop in participation due to termination of universal free meals. So what's happening is USDA has no approval and they have no legislation to universally supply free lunch to students next year. States are taking it upon themselves to fund these programs. As you probably see, State of Maine, State of Vermont have already passed their own program, their own legislation to support these programs next year. We in Connecticut have not. I am pretty close to some people at the state legislature, and there's nothing at the state legislature right now that is going to come to a vote in the near future. So we're taking all the steps right now to make sure that the message is going to get out clearly and the community knows, not just to Ram, but the entire communities of Connecticut that we operate, that we will be going back to an eligibility program, a paid free interuse program. There is a decrease in enrollment next year, which will affect some revenues. We will not have summer meals this year. We have a 5% increase in wages year-over-year, which I say is pretty responsible considering the tightness of the market and the availability of workers. New statement on wage goes to $14 an hour, which affects us greatly because we have to follow that and then actually be above that to be able to have people working for us. Food costs, big, big concern right now. We're forecasting 8% year-over-year, but nobody knows. That's going to be, that's really a conservative guess right now because all pipelines are speculative, whether it's the poultry market, the beef market is out of control, pork is out of control. Everything is just speculative. So we're going to be responsible and give you, you know, higher. The 8% is probably a real number right now, but it could go higher, and hopefully it doesn't. But that's a real number. The 10% decrease on paper and cleaning supply, it's already here. So we're just carrying that through for next year. We have container ships on, in both oceans. Can't get to port, and a lot of our products are sitting in containers. So. So Kate has done a wonderful job with substitute items. And I think students have probably seen some different things going on with trays and different things that don't look normal because we haven't been able to get stuff in the house that looks normal. That's our regular. And then the last thing is, every year, our contract allows for CPI increase. And it's written into the contract. And each year, the state sets the rate that we can actually use, and then it becomes a negotiated percent. So this year, the rate is 5.9%, and it's certainly accelerated because of the economic situation. Normally, it's 2%, 3%. The last couple of years, it's been very high. 5.9% is very high as well. And this is based on food away from home, right, theory. So we at Witsen's have want to partner with the district, and instead of the 5.9%, we basically want to propose a 4% increase. That would increase our fees by 4% year over year. And then this is a little bit detailed. I don't know if everybody can see this, but this is a little bit, little detail on, basically, left to right would be the budget for last year, which we're in now, current year, which we had forecasted last spring to basically be a normal year, where we'd go back to normal, no universal. But then in late May last year, USDA pulled the plug and basically made the whole year go for another whole year of universal. So the projection this year of the $122,000 profit is sort of an anomaly. It's a one-time, it's not going to ever really be that way again unless we have extraordinary participation by all of the paid students, paid, you know, that are eligible, have to pay rather than the free and reduce. So that's the really big difference at this point. And then the budget for next year is basically just the harmony between the pre-COVID year of 1920 and the dish current year, where we know that our numbers will not be here in revenue. But with the lower revenues, what that does, and with the higher costs, what that does. So there's a result of the number of the $34,000 deficit. And then along the right-hand side columns, what I did is, I was able to let you see what a 10%, 10 cent, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35, 40 cent per meal increase would look like. And in the pink on the bottom basically shows the breakfast and lunch, and then where the current pricing is, and then the increase by the 10, 15, and 20 cents. So you'll see where we would end up on meal pricing if we were to go the full 40 cents a meal and then back it up to 35 and 30. And you will also see where the program would be more profitable and less profitable. The goal of the program has always been to break even, so it would be revenue over cost. So it would be break even and not to be, you know, beating a dead horse. But $122,000 is superior profitability, but it comes at the expense of universal lunch. So with that said, that's sort of a wrap on that piece.
Thank you. A couple highlights, this is the year that we come in here and see what we do every day. Thankfully, we transitioned back to cafeteria. It's fully repurposed, to have the students up there and to be able to showcase our stations, with different new concepts. We offer breakfast service at three locations currently, concession stand at the middle school main entrance and in the high school cafeteria. We've enjoyed in public stations, including Yarborough and Wayne Shaft, which are really popular with the students. We also are doing Meatless Monday promotions and having smoothies. And yes, they're taking ale smoothies, so it's going well, I would say. And just to highlight that the Great American Dicking Company, which is our daily station and a high degree of making, the two most popular stations, certainly, when you come down there, Dr. Brussel, you see how busy it just can be. And so just to highlight some of what we do. And then also for marketing technology, which is a piece of communication for the real community. We have installed in the back of the house, so in the kitchen, Cafe Connections, which is a TV. It runs on an app, and there is, there's training for my staff, communication that comes out from corporate as well as myself. So that's a really great training tool. And then in the front of the house, so the recovery area, so in the high school and the middle school, we have digital signage, which is really great. So I've been able to kind of come up with the concept and what it cycles through and to, and to show off what's on the menu that day. Next shirt will have the pricing included in there too, and it's really fun. We have to put these videos of the breakfast. I'll be just one patient going on, so I think everybody really enjoys it as a highlight. And some more communication, certainly I have my weekly diary reports, I go to the side of Eva. We have marketing throughout the cafeterias. We have communication in the two schools publications weekly. And we've started doing direct communication through my school box app, as well as the weekly communication through Mosaic. We all assist them to the families, and I'm also part of a little of our action team, so I can kind of see what's going on in the community and offer any support there as well. And again, we're very glad to be part of the community. I really enjoy being here. And if anyone has any questions, we certainly, easy to reach. Any question?
And John, so in terms of the, the board has the letter that you provide, in terms of the pricing, the proposed pricing for next year? The, for breakfast, the proposal is to, and again, we say current pricing, which again is the misnomer because it's universal free. But moving from $2 to $2.40, and then for lunch to go from $2.65 to, well, you have two levels, two levels of lunch.
Right.
The typical lunch, $2.65 to $3.05, so a 40% increase. And then for the, how do you describe the higher priced lunch?
Like a premier.
Premier, premier lunch, $3.40 to $3.80. So it's a 40% increase in breakfast and both the lunch options.
And I think the notation in the letter also said that from the last, the last pricing increase was 2015, 16 school year. So that's, that's really, really a long period of time. Obviously, COVID has interrupted that, the norm on that. And the other piece I put in the letter was the fact that yearly, annually, the USDA supplies what they call Price Equity Tool for us to measure what the paid lunch prices are in regards to, in regard to what the current reimbursement rates are for the federal level. This year, there's no tool available, and basically the states are saying, figure it out, do your best, best way you can. So there's just tolerances to rate increases to make sure your profitability is, you know, steadfast. Then they want the districts to do that, but certainly there's not that measurement tool to say you have to do it for the mandatory course.
So we would need a motion from the board to accept the decreased lunch prices for the 2020, 2023 school year.
So why don't we put this out, and if there's any discussion, we can certainly pick it up from the discussion perspective. So is there a motion to accept these school meal prices for the 2022, 2023 school year as identified in the memo labeled 10.1?
10.1.
Okay. 10.1. Eric can make that motion. Any second? Mike seconds? Discussion? Hearing no discussion, move to a voice vote. All approve? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing no opposed, that motion passes. Which brings us up to the discussion of the possible action on renewing our food service contract with Witsen. Is there any other, so presentation that I want to state here?
I don't, I don't think you have any additional presentations to reflect on that. Yep. Eva, can you chime in on the 10.2?
Sure. So 10.2 is basically a memo that, as part of our five-year contract with Witsen, this would be amendment number two, and in the board of ed, this needs to vote to reapprove the contract so that Witsen's can continue servicing the district with meals for the students for the next school year. So basically, this is just a pro forma that says, yes, the board would like to keep Witsen and as our food service management company for this coming school year.
Absen, any other comments?
Nope.
All right. So is there a motion to renew our food service contract with Witsen as indicated by 10.2? Mike makes the motion. Any second?
A second at here.
Mary seconds? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'm going to go voice vote. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing no opposed, that also carries. Which brings us to 10.3, discussion of possible action on choosing a contractor to complete the athletic field and track studies. Thank you guys very much.
Hey, John, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do you want to, maybe Mike?
Yeah. So we went through the process of putting the request for quotes out for the engineering, the preliminary planning work for the three fields, the competition field, the baseball field, and the 316 practice field, as well as the track. We received RFQs, request for quotes from four different companies. We had quite a range of initial costs coming in. We had a low of $45,800. We had two that were fairly comparable, at one at $70,100, the other one at $87,000. And then we had one that came in higher of $158,600. We reviewed each of the FAQs, and then we proceeded with follow-up interviews. When I say we, myself, Mike Schleyhoffer, Eva, and Rich Clarko as our consultant. Colin sat in on the follow-up interviews as well. And then we presented the outcome of our interviews. And through the interview process, we scored the, each of the four proposals on whether they included all of the requested information, so how thorough their proposal was. We rated them on their interview and the information that they were able to, additional information, the follow-up information they were able to provide, their experience with similar projects, and the references that we conducted previously for companies. And we met with the facility subcommittee last week and presented a recommendation, and Mike, I'll hand it to you. Can you talk a little bit about that?
So the facility subcommittee met on May 11th. We reviewed in detail the RFQs, or at least the assessment of the RFQs by Scott and company. The information that was provided, the questions asked, the detail offered led us to the conclusion that we agreed, the facility subcommittee agreed with the recommendation of Scott and Mike. Because really, it was just the three of you, I think, that did vote, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So the conclusion was to go forward with a contract with Tom Irwin, which it seems that they have done a number, great deal of work locally. Their specialty is natural turf facilities, improvements, drainage, which is obviously the direction they're looking at as a district. So ultimately, I think we can open it up for discussion before a motion, or does a motion begin on the table first?
We could make a motion and then talk a special, I'll do that once it's seconded.
So I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the facility subcommittee to move forward the contract, follow the associates to perform the assessment, the drainage assessment on the three fields, the comp field, the baseball field, the 316 field, in addition to the track surface.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
I'll put it back.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie. Sorry, I couldn't see. Okay, discussion. Please go ahead, Sue.
Did they state when this will be completed by?
Well, that's a, so once we award the contract, it will take, you know, it'll take a number of weeks for the company to complete their onsite work, and then probably another few weeks to get the reports put together and brought back to us. So for this initial, what we're actually going out for right now, we're talking a timeframe of probably, you know, a couple of months before we get back the final reports. And of course, you know, that would be somewhat dependent upon, you know, where they are right now. When we, if I call them tomorrow and we, you know, have a contract by the end of the week, depending on what of the work they may have collected, so that that could affect that a little bit. In terms of the actual work on the field, so remember that what we're, what we're doing here is we're using the money that we have in the capital fund to fund the initial studies. And then the idea is that we use the money from the surplus that was already in the capital funds to fund the actual project. You know, I think the initial assumption is that we'd likely be looking at next spring to get the whole work done. So there's a lot to talk about there in terms of planning with Dan Trudeau, the Athletic Director. You know, it's not at all uncommon to move some of our sports over to another field. So for example, in the past, we moved baseball to the West Road Field in Marlboro. We moved soccer to one of the other fields in Marlboro. We moved track and field to Colchester. So once we, you know, within that month to two-month timeframe of getting the reports, the initial reports, and we know the scope of what we're looking to do, then Sue, I think they can talk in much greater specifics about when that work would be done, whether it gets done at all at the same time, or whether it's phased, where you do one field first and then go to the other. Obviously, Dan's going to have to be a part of that discussion in terms of what is reasonable to move and what may not be reasonable to move. Obviously, the summer provides a great opportunity to do a lot of this work without disrupting high school sports, so.
Thank you for the deep knowledge.
Anyone else? Discussion points?
Is this all the fields that you're concerned about?
Correct.
So we got some that we're concerned about, some that we're not. So maybe we can even kind of do a little shuffling.
Exactly. So you're right in that we have like the fields on the middle school side of the building, you know, the, where the pond is and down by the middle, the baseball field. Those fields are fine, so we may be able to move some of our activities on campus and while we conduct this work as well.
Absolutely.
During our subcommittee, we talked about some of the locations where we had to move events in the past. And it was always an alternative available to work closer to the project, Burt Hill, it's a real version. So between the three communities, we've been able to come up with decisions. On rare occasion, there's an event competition. I think there was a track, and perhaps that moved to Manchester, I guess. But that, there was a fee associated with that, and I think about $1,000, which will be discussed. So I didn't think there were any real concerns about having to come up with one.
And how much was this?
So, so the, for the initial engineering, the, the base consultant fees for the company that we're proposing, Tom Irwin Associates, $33,800. And again, comparing to the other companies that ranged from $32,000 to $74,500 to $88,600. The problem is, is that, you know, you're just comparing The problem is, is that, you know, you're just comparing that, the base consultant fee, it's a little complicated if you look at like what their construction fees are. So one company may, may be somewhat high on the initial, but then they come in low at the other one. One company was high at all, the fees across the board. But in terms of, you know, what we really had is we had one company that came in significantly lower than the other, one that came in significantly higher, and two that came in right at the, about the same amount. And we really feel strongly that Tom Irwin has the expertise they have. You know, they've been able, we've been able to see from their local projects that they've done similar things to what we're hoping to achieve. I think one of the things that I'm really impressed is that we've heard, um, from some of the folks working with them that if they're not happy with something, don't tell the, you know, contractors they're working with. Care to ask them, start over again, let's go, we're gonna make this work. So that, um, you know, because we have to get this right. This, this, we can't come back 10 years from now and be worried about any, any kind of drainage on any of these fields. And so we really feel like they have the expertise, they have the right people in place, and they're a, a company that isn't going to accept anything short of the final solution that we're, we're all really comfortable with. And that is grass fields that are going to perform beautifully under lots of different conditions, including very wet conditions.
Any further discussion? I'm sorry, Dr. Ben Ziklar?
Yeah, hi. I just wanna, um, be sure I'm here. It sounds like, um, Mike, Karen, and Superintendent Leslie that we are recommending this contractor, the, the Tom Irwin, that's correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Great.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, the motion on the table is to approve the bid submitted from the contractor, Tom Irwin, to complete the athletic field and track studies. We'll do a, uh, do a roll call, I don't know. Sorry. Lori?
You say, oh, yes.
Okay. Uh, Mike?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Ben Ziklar?
Yes.
Uh, Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yeah.
Gabe?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that carries. All right, that moves us over to item 10.5, which is a discussion of practice.
10.4.
Uh, I'm sorry, thank you. Uh, review, 10.4, review of new legislative legislation allowing for the continuation of hybrid Board of Education meetings, inclusion 10.4. Scott, you wanna agree to some of that?
Sure. So this is, this is really, I think, more informational than necessarily a discussion, but I wanted to have it so that, you know, everyone is aware of, um, this particular issue, which definitely needs to go to the policy subcommittee. So, right now, we are currently, um, not necessarily aligned with the board policy for running board meetings because our policies still reflect a vote pre, the pre-public form. And the legislature allowed school districts to adopt a hybrid model, which we did, the Ram Board did at a board meeting that allows us to, has allowed us to continue to hold meetings as we have. The, um, the rate, the way the original legislation was, was written was that, the ability to hold hybrid meetings was originally set to sunset on April 30th, 2022. So, um, if in fact that had happened, we all would have been here in person and we would have lost the ability to continue to hold hybrid meetings. But the sunset was removed, and so Board of Ed can still have the option of holding hybrid meetings. The, the, the only reason I bring this to the board's attention is that what we need to do now is we need to update the policy for holding meetings to reflect the specific requirements within the legislation. So it will still allow for hybrid meetings. It will still allow the board to, um, some flexibility in terms of, you know, how often you do hybrid meetings and under what circumstances it can be, you know, pretty much likely you can do it all alone. One of the interesting things that, that may, that may impact how we run the subcommittee meetings is that, um, if, if, so I'm just reading the summary from Shipman and Goodwin, but this is in the legislation. The board meeting is fully remote, the board must provide members of the public upon written request with a physical location and any electronic equipment necessary to attend a remote meeting in real time, and the same opportunities to provide comment or testimony. So, what they're suggesting here is that if they, um, you know, although we, we have been holding fully remote meetings, and I, I believe that for subcommittee meetings, that's still gonna be appropriate and something that, that actually, I think, has increased participation, we would nonetheless need to have within our policies and stated that if somebody requested it, we would have to have a, a kind of a someone set up here on campus. So even though the rest of the subcommittee was remote, or the entire subcommittee was remote, if a member of the public wanted to participate, we'd need to make sure that we provide them with the opportunity to do that here. So, it's a, you know, just an example of one of the items that you'll have to consider. So, again, I, I don't have a proposed policy to, to bring you at this time, but I, I do, it is something that will need to go to the policy subcommittee. So that the policy aligns with the practice, and it will give the board another opportunity to ask if, if this is in fact how you'd like to continue, or if there's any tweaks about.
So, uh, this one?
There's no motion needed, I'll, I'll make sure that whenever the next policy needed means that we, um, we'll make sure that this is on the agenda.
Okay. Uh, any questions, any other, we lost? Sorry, our monitor went asleep there for a second on the online folks, just wanna make sure you were still with us. So, okay, so then, other than that, we're ready to move on to the report back here. Any other discussions? Any questions or discussions, questions about the hybrid policy? Only thing I would throw in is that I would firmly support continuing this. I think it, it generates significantly better participation across the board, both from the public, as well as the options for this, for the, uh, the, the board. As a army reservist who was deployed or mobilized during a portion of my time, it facilitated my ability to participate, and I, I thought that was fantastic. And I'm sure for everybody else's work and whatever creates some flexibility, it still allows us to participate. So I, I'm hoping we can continue to include that as part of our policy. All right, given that, move on to 10.5. Uh, the discussion of practice policy of sharing community partner event announcements in Ram Student Communications. So, um, before we go into this discussion, let me just throw out what, you know, again, just to frame the initial, at least the initial portion of the discussion, and then certainly you can branch from wherever it needs to go. My only point bringing this up was that, again, I'm not sure there needs to be a policy or there doesn't need to be a policy. I think it would be worth the subcommittee's time to just investigate what other school boards have in place and see if there's a need to, number one, give the administration a little bit of a foundation to stand on in the decisions that they make regarding this. And, um, and then also, like I said, you know, decide whether or not, in fact, we need to have that. I think my concerns were, number one, there wasn't anything that, you know, it's pretty informal, which leads to your questions. But my, my purpose in generating this discussion was that a, a constituent parent commented to me, well, who gets to decide what goes in the, in the student communications and who doesn't? And what's the process for that? And frankly, the answer was, we don't, we don't really have a formal process, I think. So I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure that's the best answer for that kind of, that kind of circumstance. The only other thing that I would throw out on this is that, again, certainly up to the policy committee to discuss and, and kind of investigate whether or not this is appropriate. But I think we, um, open ourselves, by not having any kind of a policy or, or more formalized procedure, we open ourselves up to, um, to the potential for identifying things that are not in alignment with, as Scott put, the district's mission. But then, um, you know, the jeopardy of, well, you included everybody else's communication, you're, you know, you're not including mine, and it's, it's, uh, in some way, shape, or form, you know, preventing, uh, you know, a group from participating without, without any kind of a policy foundation to say this is why. So, that's my thoughts on why, why we did this as part of any, you know, um, motion that I might make to pass this off to the policy committee for, purely for investigative purposes. I would certainly stipulate, based on the, the earlier discussion on this, that the administration for both schools, as well as anybody that the administration, any stakeholders deem appropriate to participate in that discussion, be invited and included to do so. That being said, certainly open any discussion on this.
So, can, Mike, can we hear what Scott suggests we do? Because I just wanna see, you know, we've had a discussion, and I wanna hear what his thoughts are tonight and what Tressa thinks tonight. Would that be okay for all of us, so we can make our opinions? Because I'm undecided, I would like to hear from both of them.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So Judy, I think that, um, you know, I, I, earlier I expressed, you know, concerns I had with this, but I think at this point, it's not at all inappropriate for the policy committee to, to basically, what Mike suggested, look at what other districts are doing in this area. We, we always will ask our attorneys to provide us with the proposed policy that they may have in this area.
Yeah.
So, you know, the policy committee would have an option to, one, ask the question, you know, are there policies in this area, and if so, what do they look like? You know, I, I think from our discussion, the board is sensitive to, you know, the challenges that, that this may be, but I think that, you know, having that discussion and then bringing it to the full board, you know, so I, I guess what, what, what my suggestion would be to allow the policy committee to do that investigation, to see. You know, if, if there are policies and if, if, you know, because, because, you know, there, I, I think there is something to be said for the fact that, you know, as administrators, we, we tend to fall back on the policies, and if there is not a policy, then, um, you know, it, it opens us up and it opens up the district to all, you know.
So, so two things. One, Mike, um, someone texted me that Jess, we're gonna miss you, but that you're going to be off of policy. So Mike, um, until we find someone to replace her, I would volunteer to do that. And partly because I have had this experience, and I can tell you where it got strange as an administrator was, we had, um, you know, scout kinds of things that were okay, and then it got into certain prayer things, and it got a little bit less comfortable. So, so I appreciate, um, Superintendent Leslie, what you said, and I'll be here for, um, Tressa. And unless anybody else has a burning passion or desire to join, um, Mary, Mary and Dave, I would, um, I would extend that offer because I have some significant policy experience. So I, nobody has to answer that now, people can be confused if they want to be on policy. Or Mike, I've got a busy schedule, I'll be fine above you, but I'm not. Can we hear from Tressa, also her thoughts? My voice, sorry.
Sure. Hi, everybody. Um, thank you so much for taking us, you know, up and, and having opened minds and consideration. Um, you know, I would say in the work that I have done the past few years with AHM, I'm just so grateful for the continued collaboration with, not with Ram, but, um, in the elementary schools in the four towns that we serve. And, you know, every time we go to promote a program, a scholarship, a parent education night, you know, we go through a procedure of not only sharing the information with the school principals, but also the superintendents. So I feel as though, you know, AHM and I'm sure Park and Rec in the libraries, you know, we are following, you know, a procedure and having the information put out there. With that, I will say, you know, we do rely on the schools to provide that information to parents. Um, you know, for AHM, whether it's our clinical outpatient therapy program, positive graduation, um, we have three scholarships that we offer, Ram Seniors. You know, through our CHAP coalition, we share, um, you know, a great deal of information around drug prevention and parent information. You know, so I, I really do feel that there's a, a lifeline there that is, is crucial. Um, you know, a lot of our programming that we do, again, is positive youth development. And I think as someone had mentioned, you know, it's not a requirement, but it's an option. And I, I think that's really important, important to consider as, you know, we, we look at all students and all families as a whole, districts that AHM serves, that we are giving opportunities for all. And again, not being a requirement, but being a choice for parents and students to, you know, um, have an interest in, in a whole myriad of topics. So, you know, I guess, I guess what, what I really hope for, and it's not just for AHM, but it's also for the other community partners that Ram has, I hope that, you know, we are able to continue to share out the information. Um, because I really feel like as a community, we have a lot to offer. And there's a lot of great collaboration and sharing of information, and without the proper means of getting that word out, it's very hard for us to continue to have success in operating those programs.
So, so thank you both. I mean, I would like to say, and I know that I wanted to delete it, but I am comfortable going forward with this if our intent is, um, only to, to give some guidance. And there also has to be, obviously, at times, um, in policy covers that were discussed or administrative determination is made. But it, it sounds like everybody's intentions are good with this, and that we're not trying to suppress information or, or anything such as that. Because if, if that were ever the case, I would be so opposed. But it sounds like we're just trying to provide more guidance to the structure for our administrative team. Is, is that, Mike, your thought?
Yeah, let me, let me just ask it, yes, Judy, but let me just ask if, uh, if I can answer your question, I just do want to ask if there's anybody else that has any other, any other concerns or, or thoughts about this, this subject? Because if that's the case, then Judy, I'll frame the, the motion to answer your question, and that, that'll kind of give you the understanding of what I, what I propose. Anyone else? Okay, what I, what I make a motion to do is to move over to the, uh, our sensitive policy committee, the investigation and review of a potential, uh, policy of sharing community partner events in Ram Student Communications. With the stipulation that as part of that particular policy discussion, that, uh, potential policy discussion, that the middle school and high school administrators, as well as any stakeholders that they deem appropriate, are, uh, able to participate in that, that discussion.
Second, yeah.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, who seconded that? I'll call Judy is the second on that. Do a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, that passes. Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, 10.6, first reading of policies. Who's from the policy committee gonna take that on? Uh, new policy, homeschool instruction, homeschool student policy.
Sure, I, I can give the context in the background. So, one of the, um, you know, we, the district has always encouraged, and, oh, I shouldn't say encouraged, but, but always supported any families that wish to homeschool their students, and we certainly followed the state, um, requirements that allowed parents and families to choose to homeschool their, their students. Traditionally, the fact that we don't have a policy that addresses how we manage a student coming in mid, mid-year or, you know, mid-high school career into, from a homeschooling environment, created a challenge for us because right now, we don't have a mechanism for rewarding. environment created a challenge for us because right now we don't have a mechanism for awarding credit to a student coming from a homeschool program because we simply have no policy that even addresses that. And in the past, I think it hasn't been a challenge and we haven't realized that the lack of a policy could be problematic because typically most families will maybe homeschool in elementary or middle, and so they're entering either the beginning of middle school and might be entering at the beginning of high school. High school obviously provides a larger challenge because high schools award credit for courses. And typically, when a student enters a high school, say, in mid-year or again, rather than coming in as a sophomore, a freshman may be coming in as a sophomore, junior, senior, they're typically coming in from another private or public school which is accredited. And so we're able to just simply move those credits over to the Ram transcript and make, you know, make their knowledge with their credits from, you know, high school. With students coming in from homeschool experiences, one of the challenges we have is that, you know, we don't necessarily are our position to view, judge, or rate the quality of some of those programs. And so the policy that we presented here is the policy recommended by Chetan Goodwin and that, which is adopted by some of our neighboring school districts. And essentially, what it does is, one, it very clearly supports the rights of families to homeschool their children. So please don't misinterpret that as this is anything other than that. But what it does is it provides the administration with guidance in terms of how to award credit for someone coming in from anything other than, say, a private or public school. And essentially, it's providing three different options for students to transfer credit over into the high school. Either the student has successfully completed coursework from an accredited institution or they've successfully completed coursework through a home instruction program accredited by one of the regional crediting agencies. The, here in New England, we're accredited by the New England Association of School Colleges. Each region, well, there are numbers of regions in the country that are overseen by other accredited agencies. The, or the student has achieved a passing grade on the subject area proficiency examination identified and approved by the State of Connecticut Commissioner of Education. These are tests that don't exist yet, but students, when they, the state will be developing exams which will essentially reflect, somebody may reflect, or you can reflect out of having taken a college course. And so we anticipate that the state will develop exams for key courses like algebra, biology, and a student will be able to achieve high school credit by taking those courses. So it would, you know, a homeschooled student would be able to take advantage of that. A student attending Ram would take advantage of that. So it would allow students to have more options for gaining credits. The, you know, obviously, a student coming in at the, say, as a freshman or even mid-freshman year has, you know, is very likely able to get the full load of credit required for graduation and therefore earns a Ram diploma. Homeschooled students obviously are completing rigorous programs and there are homeschooled students that obviously don't ever enter a public high school, but still graduate high school and they go into colleges and they can be just as successful as anyone. And, you know, it's, we haven't seen it, but it's not unusual for a student that comes in late in their high school career, say, a junior, a senior, and they may actually, rather than receiving a diploma from that school, go in with two transcripts. And the colleges understand that and are able, and understand that and are able to accept that student. So it doesn't necessarily prevent a student from pursuing academics beyond high school. It's not like we, they have to start over and get all this credit. So essentially, what this policy does is it provides us with the guidance to which courses we can offer credits for that would transfer over to the Ram transcript. It doesn't mean that the other courses that they've taken, depending on when they're coming into the high school, are not of any use for that student. That student may use that transcript to supplement the Ram transcript when they do the college applications. But essentially, the purpose of this is to provide us with guidance that we can offer credit to those students that are still in those programs.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'm just looking at my package here and, you know, it appears to be a four-page RAM and I have page one on the back.
No, it's just those two. It's just those two.
Dr. Vencecler?
Yeah, my other question has to do with the review of this process for the stipulations without minds in the event of being set up. Ask, does anything should be discussed? How would we engage the families? This is a time next for families when they would need this transition. Obviously, there's reasons for deciding about which school in the first place, as we heard earlier tonight. What is a policy in charge to address, include the families in the discussion of how your parents are?
Well, typically, the, a school council has decided to begin that process with the family to review the courses taken. We may involve or likely involve some of the coordinators depending on the subject areas in question and typically, one of the administrators. What we'll often do is provide some sort of entrance exam to determine exactly where the student's skill is, so that we make sure that we don't, you know, misplace them and of course, that maybe isn't challenging for them. We want to make sure that we don't overtell them too. So that will take place. Again, without a policy like this to try to determine which outside programs would be worthy of being, you know, sitting on the Ram transcript is almost, well, it's difficult because there's so many programs out there and we often don't have the benefit of seeing the type of program. By relying on accredited program, that's why accreditation is there, essentially. And so colleges, you know, the New England Association of Schools and colleges is essentially a K through 16 year, you know, accreditation process. So when UConn, for example, when a student graduates from Ram and we're accredited from us, they know what to expect. They know that the student will have it. And so, you know, it's important for us to make sure that our transcript reflects that same assurance that the students, you know, if it's on the Ram transcript, it's also going to credit. So we don't need to then, you know, investigate that to see whether it's appropriate or not. The accreditation process kind of allows for that.
Is this a policy that would be made up?
Absolutely. Yeah.
And I think it's, we are in a, certainly, I think, an unusual time because as I said,
we haven't, we haven't noticed the absence of the policy that we haven't had. But with COVID, you know, there are many families that have decided, you know, for a variety of reasons, to homeschool when they might, you know, that might not have happened if COVID had ever happened. And we do anticipate that we will have more families than we might normally have doing this. Even, you know, if the pandemic subsides, we still may have some folks that, you know, for various reasons want to keep their kids home for a year, two, three, whatever. So we want to make sure that we're prepared to be able to support those families as well.
Thanks. Awesome. I just want to add a couple of things into this. So one of the things I excel at is knowing what I don't know. So it was very beneficial to have Mrs. Stewart come and present today. One of the things I got, two things that I want to throw out, I don't want to steal any of the policy development's thunder on this, but her discussion about the costs of the accredited courses and accredited curriculum concerns me a little bit. What I want to make sure that we're not doing, I'm not sure we can do it strictly as one regional school district, but forcing parents to make the decision between, you know, significant financial, I don't want to say this, so just hardship, but commitment versus participating in the regular regional school district. It feels like there probably, that probably should be the deciding factor, that there should be some intermediate ability to manage that. Given that, I understand that there's concerns about making sure that anything that we represent as curriculum on Ram's transcript, that it is accredited. One thing that Scott educated me on was that the fact that anybody that might graduate from here that would have course, work that they had completed that didn't necessarily cover the accreditation piece would still be captured in a document that is similar or akin to a transcript, just not necessarily certified by Ram as accredited, which would still be satisfactory to send to colleges or whatever, and they can make their own determination about the validity or whatever of that accreditation. So I think there's a lot for the, I don't want to, again, I don't want to steal a policy, a committee's under on any of this, but I think there's a lot to consider outside of this. And I think it's important to get people like Mrs. Stewart's input on this because clearly she's had to kind of navigate some of the waters that we, a lot of us haven't yet. But I am definitely concerned about the idea that the cost involved in that. And I want to make sure that we're cognizant as we develop a policy that we don't create a kind of a, almost a financial possibility for the majority of folks who are in a situation where they may need to make that decision for whatever reason. Any other comments or discussion on that particular first read? Hearing none, we'll move on to 5470 Wellness Policy, enclosure 10.6B.
So the wellness policy, if you haven't read it yet, I'm going to encourage you to make sure you do so because you'll see two copies. One is the red line, which essentially takes our current policy, which is no longer relevant. And the blue underlined one provides us with, in its full glory, all of the items that the State of Connecticut wants us to include in our wellness policy. And you almost have to kind of forget what you think wellness might be because where it's defined here is very, very specific to our food program, our cafeteria, food program, and physical education. And essentially, what the blue underlined wellness program does is it outlines in all its glorious detail the requirements that each of the schools has to ensure that we're adequately implementing the healthy foods initiative that the district participates in. So, you know, for example, on the second page, it references the, some of the committees that need to work quarterly to provide feedback to our food service personnel and to the district and who needs to be on those committees. Our nursing services, counseling, food service individuals, physical education folks, parents, students, community partners. And this really is focused on, again, the nutrition aspect of the, our food service provider. The other piece that this brought, and that includes everything from ensuring that students are satisfied with the options that they're being provided. It includes discussions on encouraging student participation. It includes some of the limitations and restrictions we have in marketing, fundraising, foods, and this sort of thing. And then the other piece is physical education and ensuring that we're adhering to the test requirements for physical education and that we're providing all of our students with a healthy exposure to physical education activities. You'll notice that right after the physical education, they go right back into the cafeteria and they talk about cafeteria à la carte sales and what can be sold, what can't be sold, lunchroom item. So this really is a, when we talk about wellness, it's really focused on cafeteria, on physical education, and fundraising activities involving food and that sort of thing. There's a lot there, but again, it's kind of, this codifies what we've been doing for the last five or six years. This is really nice.
Okay. Any other discussion on the wellness policy first read? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to 10.7 Financials.
Okay. Good evening. So in your packet, you'll see 10.7A, expenditures and revenue report as of April 30th, 2022. We're also going to be doing the transfers in this presentation. So as of April 30th, 2022, I'm projecting a net favorable position of $433,720. That takes into account the current available of $780,097 and take away the shortfall for excess cost revenue, which is $347,025. So unfortunately, due to student placements, movement in the population, some students moved out, our COVID adjustments after March 1st, 2021, the district will only be receiving the $223,862 in excess cost for this fiscal year. However, we do have an uptick in people renting our facility for dance companies. So that is a positive. That is hopefully going to offset some of the negative of not receiving all of the excess cost revenue. Our capital improvement fund, the HBAC project is substantially completed. Unfortunately, the unit for the head end room has been delayed due to supply chain issues and the estimated shift date is still May 24th, 2022. So hopefully, that'll be coming shortly. Our capital recurring fund, we're still awaiting the finalization of the DOT project by the State of Connecticut. There's been no, no new information there. And people services is still conducting IEPs and tracking any last minute changes for the month of May and June. So hopefully, we'll have more good news there than not. Are there any questions as to what I may have presented this evening? Okay. So here, hearing none. We'll go to 10.7B, which is the Ram activity, the student activity list list. They currently bound with the Western Bank accounts. So are there any questions that the board may have on student activity accounts? Okay. So hearing none, we'll go to 10.7C, which is a food service monthly sales and expenditures. So as John had stated earlier, that there is no news on continuing the universal free for our students to be able to participate. However, in an update that we received from the Caswell Legislative Liaison, the State of Connecticut might be using some ARP grant funding, which is approximately $30 million to assist in providing free meals to schools in this coming school year. But there is no additional information that has been received on that. So I'm assuming the state is still ironing out all those details. If you look at the back page of that memo, we are currently, from March to April 30th, we're controlling how the net income for this fiscal year, $31,492 and $37. And are there any questions the board might have on that information? Okay. So hearing none. Next item is 10.7D, which is the budget appropriation transfers for March and April. So in totality, there's 36 girl entries that represent the transfers. The transfers total out to $100,000. The transfers total out to one hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and eight dollars and forty-four cents. On the page two is the summary version of the thirty-six transfers. I believe somebody needs to make a motion to either accept or deny or not accept the proposed transfers as I proposed them.
Okay, the motion on the table to accept the transfers, uh, made by Eric, seconded by Mike, discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, those transfers carry.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, given the time is slightly after nine o'clock, I'm going to make a motion that we table the committee reports to the next meeting unless there's some significant firm passion for them to give a committee report. All right, so I make the proposal, Mike seconded it. Any discussion?
Wait a minute, I just, can I, I'd like to just give for that, that to be permissible, very brief updates.
Sure. Why don't we do that as part of the discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect. So next Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, at three-thirty is the UConn annual meeting, if anybody wants to go in person. So they have a speaker usually and some food and it's a, it's a very large event. So it's next Tuesday. It's normally the day after RAM, but because it's the big event, it's a different week. It's next Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, at three-thirty. And then I did go to a caveless informational session on legislation that has gone through and I think, I think we're, we're just being updated appropriately through the board meeting. So, but also I know a couple of us have signed up already for the November eight meeting and then there's usually the summer meeting. So if you look at that, they provide really excellent information. And I'm not sure where this falls, but this is important and I need to share this. The board, I just texted it and I want all of you and we're really hoping that our board members participate, even if we can't walk it, make a donation. It's fifteen dollars per student, twenty dollars per individuals and thirty-five dollars per family. So we're actually losing money on teachers and things, but we're doing a mental health awareness walk around the lake in Marlboro on June third and five to eight P M. And it would be really great if we could have RAM staff, RAM board members there. We have about forty-five people registered so far and I know they can be misunderstood like this, so we can run for teachers and things if you're going to participate. I would really greatly appreciate it if you could do that, that soon. That's, that's my discussion, I think. Thank you.
No problem. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of tabling the committee reports? Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. We will table the committee reports, move on to public comment. Just keep in mind that the original statement regarding public comment still remains in effect for item twelve. Are there anybody present? Is there anyone present that would like to present as part of his public comment?
Can I talk again?
Absolutely.
So the first four I had are questions that I don't expect anyone to answer. They're just food for thought. The first one, it's you, I love the idea that you ask if it would be made public because that was one of my questions to help parents prepare. So if it is going to be made public, what happens to families like myself who are now trying to transition my children back into school, who were not aware of this new policy that's coming out because we may have made different choices? Had we known about it ahead of time? I can tell you we would have made different choices, definitely. My, another question, again, food for thought, I don't expect an answer, students transferring from other countries, are their transcripts reviewed to ensure the programs they're coming from are accredited? And if they're not, why are we singling out just homeschool families? Why not an option for a portfolio review, which would be if that parent doesn't have the financial ability to pay for accredited programs, they would have to bring in the curriculum that they used, maybe some samples of schoolwork that they own to prove that their student could be successful in the grade that they're trying to enter into? While I understand the accreditation piece, I'm always the word offended because I feel like people use that word too much and we have a choice whether we want to be offended or not. Not really offended by the word worthy, but I think we want to be careful using that word when we're talking about curriculum because my daughter is enrolled in a college and the college is accredited and did not question whether the courses we chose to put her through were worthy or not. They accepted them, so homeschool students can have a transcript and go to college. So it seems, anyway. How much time do I have left? I know everyone wants to go home. I don't want to take up another two minutes. Uh, for three, policy statement section, and this is just my personal perception of sentence, formal school structure provides students with the opportunity to interact with other students and with professionally trained adults that is difficult to emulate in the home. I ask that maybe that be reworded in a kinder way. I hold a master's degree in education and through teacher certifications. My husband is a degreed engineer, so to say that we as adults are not trained in our home is a bit condescending. At least that's how it makes me feel. And my children are well socialized. They go to youth group, they have many other opportunities besides public schools to be socialized with ladies, with our neighbors, et cetera. There's a couple other legal things in here, but if anybody else, I would love to be a part of helping with the language and that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stewart. Appreciate it. Any other public comment? Yes, please.
Ethan Sallie, point two, Ruben Dale, Marlboro. To be clear, I'm going to speak tonight on my own personal opinions, not for the RAN faculty. Sometimes I do, just to be clear on that. As a RAN parent and a RAN teacher and a RAN two-season coach for twenty years now, I am respectfully disappointed in the change in the athletic requirements. I think high expectations should always be defended. I think if there's one student athlete that's failed, I think we haven't done a good enough job at communicating clearly the high expectations that we have. And if we could do better in that area, I think that's where we could improve upon so that high expectations just in a policy or mentioned once at a meeting in the fall or the spring could be reiterated throughout the season so that the consequences and the ramifications of students not performing in the classroom are, are a reminder consistently for those student athletes. We provide many opportunities for students to be successful in the classroom at RAM. I'm not going to go into them because our own student rep, student athlete represented that said them very clearly and articulately. That student's perspective sums up exactly what I would, would say as well. I would like you to consider that if a student fails at the end of a quarter, that is eight weeks where that student was supported by the classroom teacher. That's eight weeks where they were supported by a co-teacher, eight weeks where they were supported by guidance, building administrators, social workers, psychologists, if necessary. Throughout those eight weeks, our student athletes have had many opportunities for support, many. And I feel as a classroom teacher, this is just one less tool that we will have to motivate students that are right on that borderline. And I say that also as a coach, this will be one less tool that our coaches have when we are on the court and we are on the fields and we are saying, hey, as an athlete, you need to be doing your job, you need to be working hard, we strive for excellence, teamwork. All the things that we say as coaches, those don't just apply to the athletic realm, they apply to the classroom as well. Also, as a parent, many of our parents lean on RAM policies to support them at home, to say to their child, look, you're not playing sports if you cannot keep up your grades. And I feel even allowing one F is a disservice to our community. And I know I'm late to the discussion and you've made your decision and I'm very respectful of your decision, but I would maybe ask that we revisit this maybe at the same time next year. I think the decision tonight was made anecdotally. I think it would be great to hear from the athletic director, how many students do we have failing at this point, student athletes? I apologize. And maybe look at where we are next year. Do we have the same number of student athletes failing? Do we have more? Do we have less? Do we have the same? Something that indicates that the right decision was made here. Policies are always challenged, always. And I, I would hate to see five years down the road when maybe there are new board members and a new athletic director, for somebody to come in and challenge this policy and say, well, you know, one F isn't really that bad, you know, and, and lower the standard some more. I know we are above the CIAC standard, but RAM, that's, that's what we do here. That's why people move to this community. We have high standards and I'm disappointed that we lowered them just a little bit tonight. And I thank you for your, your thoughts and your discussion, but I think it was worth saying. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Anyone online for public comment? Anyone? All right, hearing no public comment online. So here we go. Informational items, number thirteen, Scott, anything that you feel like we need to?
Nope, I think other than Judy already mentioned the walk, the mental health walk. I'll, I'll send copies of the flyer out to everybody, but other than that, no.
Any questions or discussion on the informational items provided?
For the board?
All right, given none, then we are at item fourteen for executive session. And we need motion, I have to move to executive session, correct? So is there a motion to move to executive session? Mike makes the motion. Do we have a second? Gabe seconds, do we move to executive session? All right. If we could ask the board members online to join the executive session? Just letting you know when we have everybody back. Oh, we're good? Okay. Great. Okay, so it appears that we have everybody back. So item fifteen, action on as a result of the executive session. Somebody make a motion to accept the proposed changes based on the executive session discussion?
So moved.
Okay, Sue, and I'll call Erica as the second. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Just prior to the adjournment, I just want to say again, thank you, Jessica, for being a part of the board. Appreciate your dedication and your donation of your time and your expertise and can't tell you how much I'm going to miss you having you on the board. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate that very much.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Mike makes the motion to adjourn any second? I'm going to give that one, it sounded like, I don't know, who was that? I can see Gabe's, I can see Gabe's argument, so I'll give Gabe the second on that one. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Right, thanks, everyone.